May I all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome Rick, Senator, to the Planning Commission. Roll call, we're all present except for Chris. We got any changes, additions, deletions from the agenda?
Not for tonight.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for an addition to the agenda. I'd like to see the minutes provided from our last meeting before we start, before we get into the next meeting. Sorry, John, but minutes are important.
Yep, I'm aware of that. I did speak with our staff and they just weren't done for this particular meeting, but we're working to not get behind again. Your request is noted.
I would move for approval of the agenda, as Brendan.
Got approval and a second to approve the agenda, all in favor, standing with a sign, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved, same sign, passed with all present. Item five, rezoning variance.
Mr. Chair, I would just like to point out clarification, are we gonna handle each of these, the public hearing and the decision on each of these separately, I presume?
Yes, that's the recommendation, is because there are three separate requests to handle each item separately with separate votes, because it's-
I think it would be better.
Yeah, it's possible. All, one, two, or none could go or not, depending on how you treat it. Go ahead with the public hearing.
Notice the public hearing, Way Park Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at City Hall, 19 13th Avenue North, 6:30 or soon after, on Tuesday, March 14th, to hear the following quest, request of Thomas R. Ferrex to rezone lots 20 through 22, block 43, town site of Way Park, 120 12th Avenue North, all in the city of Way Park, Stearns County, Minnesota, R1, single-family residential district, to a B2, commercial, general business district, and for a variance from the city ordinance, 52.27 sub 7F, and C ordinance 52.42 sub 7L, to reduce side yard setback and screening requirements for the purpose of converting the property to additional parking. Public hearing opened at 6:33.
Planning Commission members, Chair Jansky, folks in the audience, or anyone watching at home, on the screen, you see the location outlined in red of the property at hand for tonight. The address is 20 12th Avenue North, the applicant does have a purchase agreement, at least in place for that property. The request has been submitted by applicant Tom Ferrex regarding the Ultimate Sports Bar and Grill, as you can see immediately to the south. Applicant is requesting rezoning of the property to allow for conversion from the current residential use to additional parking lot area for the ultimate, as well as two variances to build out the parking lot to a preferred design to maximize available stalls and promote visibility and safety for the parking lot. A little bit of history with the project here. Mr. Ferrex approached city staff last fall to discuss interest in the property when it came up for sale, when it was listed for sale, and possible use of the property for establishment of additional parking space, parking lot area, to which staff responded generally positively, given the popularity of the recently constructed and expanded Ultimate Bar and Grill, has had kind of an inadvertent impact on driving a significant increase in the on-street parking for the area, particularly along 11th Avenue North Side, and has been problematic for residents and even, to some degree, access for large emergency vehicles, especially when we get into heavy snow conditions like we're in now. The issue and possible means to resolve or address those aspects has been discussed at several city council work sessions over the past year or so, but at least to date, there's not been any long-term permanent proposed resolution. The timing of the opportunity to increase the parking by acquiring and converting this property, 20 12th Avenue North, is somewhat fortuitous, and several city staff, including myself and the city engineer and public works director, we met with the applicant previously in fall of 2022 and determined that it would be best to design the parking lot and go through the process in early 2023 with the intent to potentially construct in spring, summer of this year, if the approval would be granted. Excuse me. The intent of the applicant and proposal is to demolish the existing home and accessory buildings on the property and construct fencing at eight-foot height, which is the same as existing, around the north and eastern sides of the property. The proposal requires rezoning from the existing R1, single-family residential district, to a B2, commercial, general business district, to align with the remainder of the ultimate property. The proposed parking, and I'll toggle down here so folks can see. The proposed parking lot would accommodate 45 additional parking stalls with an additional substandard-sized stall in the lower corner here, that you see dedicated to motorcycle, dedicated to motorcycle parking. The proposed parking has been reviewed by city building official, who has determined that it will trigger a need for provision of two additional handicap dedicated parking stalls, which must be placed nearest the building on a handicap accessible route. This would most likely mean dedicating additional stalls nearest the existing handicap dedicated stalls. This has been forwarded to our city engineer as part of their design here as well. Those factors would be included as part of the plan review and approval if the requests are approved and this project would move forward. On the rezoning aspects, I am supportive and recommend approval of that. The rezoning is in line, it's not a spot zone. The ultimate and the surrounding property are zone B2, so to potentially convert a parcel is not out of line, provided it goes through the proper channels here. I would note, I didn't include it in the report, but since this went out, I did do some kind of cursory calculations. The design as proposed with 45 stalls. If you factor that and kind of compare it to the on-street parking situation at the size or depth of a large-sized parallel parking stall, the parking being proposed with this parking lot would be, in best conditions of summer with no snow or anything like that, equivalent to about one block worth of parking, both sides, up and down the block, in a parallel arrangement. That also includes not covering or parking in front of any driveways or anything like that. So I just want to kind of temper expectations here. I know this is, you know, a potential way to kind of take the wind out of some of the parking issue if this were to move forward, but I don't think it's going to necessarily be an end-all, be-all, that there would never be parking on the street. That's something that perhaps the city council may have to weigh separately in the future at some point, but it could take a heck of a lot of dent out of it. I just don't want to come across with this as a, there would never be parking on the street if this moves forward. It does a good job of opening up space, but the ultimate is very popular. It gets a lot of traffic, brings a lot of folks to the community, but with that comes a parking demand. But it's a heck of a dent in it, and that's why I wanted to mention. But that is at maximum size, parallel stalled measurements, kind of the standards vary from place to place. I don't think we necessarily have a standard for on-street parking for parallel. I measured it at the high end of 26-foot deep. The standard for most areas runs as low as 22, which could, you know, if you revise that, could maybe net a couple stalls worth on the street, but depends how good someone is behind the wheel and if they remember how to parallel park. So, I know I can't. I'd be one of those people going around the block a few times. For the variances, in order to maximize use of the property for parking stalls and help reduce demand for the on-street parking, the applicant is requesting variance from city ordinance 52.27 subdivision F, which requires a 15-foot landscaped grass or other setback between properties, zoned B2, commercial, general business district, and those zoned R1. The request to be to reduce that from 15 feet to zero. Just a little history behind that. We did meet that requirement with the reconstruction of the ultimate in the past several years. It wasn't previously meant for the property prior to its destruction, unfortunately due to fire. In practice, it's not commonly meant for most existing areas of the city where we have commercial areas that abut residential zoning district. Yeah, another one where we did apply it recently in an area like this was the Tommy's Express Car Wash, that has the 15-foot buffer between theirs and the residential. It's good intention, it's a good ordinance, but it had the inadvertent result that when we applied it to this property, probably cost us some parking stalls too, and that's helped drive up the demand at least a little bit on the street when we have that area eaten up for kind of a landscape buffer area. The second variance request is from city ordinance section 52.42 subdivision 7L, which requires that parking lots adjacent to the residential zoning districts provide fencing screening to minimize glare of headlights into adjacent properties. The minimum is for three-and-a-half-foot height of either vegetation or fencing or birmingham. The idea is that three-and-a-half-foot is enough to kind of block most headlights from kind of impacting glare. That's not going to necessarily get every vehicle, you know, if you have a big truck or something that sits really high, that could probably get over that with some level of ease, but the idea is that would prevent most common vehicles from having glare into neighboring properties. The proposal is for the property to have eight-foot-high solid fencing on the northern and the eastern side along the alley. Alley side, speaking with the city engineer, does leave adequate space for snow storage with alley plowing, but the applicants are requesting to leave the western side of the parking lot unfenced, the 12th Avenue side. This was a result of discussion with the city staff and intended to promote safety and visibility from 12th Avenue North. If we've fully fenced the area, it could create some inadvertent lower, no-visibility areas. It's kind of a public safety concern, it could be potentially taken advantage of by someone with bad intentions, perhaps compounded by an environment that includes alcohol and a lot of the times being at night. The proposal to leave the western side unfenced would have the most impact on the property at 23 12th Avenue North, directly across. I'll toggle back to the map here. You can see right across the street, there's a property there that's not quite as impacted now, I'm sure they certainly see some glare in the parking lot now, but this could potentially increase that to some degree if it's left unfenced. But otherwise, aside from those couple properties, it would seem to have kind of nominal impact over the existing conditions of the site. The applicant and city staff believe that in this instance, the aspect of practical difficulties has been met. The hardships are not self-created in their entirety, but rather an aspect of utilizing existing properties to their highest and best potential. The configuration of the properties and areas of confluence between residential and commercial zoning districts aren't the result of the applicant, but really just a pre-existing condition over which they didn't have any control. I'm supportive of both variance requests as presented. As far as public comments, before we open it up for discussion or public comments from those here, I just didn't want to know what, I did receive one call and a couple emails regarding the request. Most are generally supportive of the request. One noted that they did not want to see the parking lot expanded, but they were also displeased with the on-street parking, which the expansion is intended to help reduce, so I'm not really sure. Several did bring up aspects such as late-night behavior, patrons, and displeasure with the number of nights live music occurs. I would just want to note that those aren't aspects that are within the scope of this specific request. Certainly, we know that with the kind of nightlife environment, there are things that happen unfortunately, and, you know, land use decisions can't always dictate the behavior of someone that's had a couple too many drinks and does something stupid, unfortunately. So I just wanted to kind of note that we have the task of focusing on the land use decision aspect at hand rather than the kind of the social aspects. Is this request does include a public hearing component? The planning commotion, or excuse me, planning commission will need to hold the public hearing prior to any action. And again, the items, the three requests should be taken one at a time, and as you will, and with your recommendations. With that, I can open up to questions and public hearing. Yes, sir?
Quick question, John, with the added parking over in this area, I presume it's going to impact his handicap parking in the existing area?
Yep, it would, that amount of parking, we've already had it reviewed, requires two additional stalls, two additional handicap dedicated stalls on a, and forgive me, I'm probably not using the proper terminology, but on an accessible route. And that probably means they're going to have to be located right nearest the building, probably where, close to or right where the existing stalls would be.
Are handicap stalls larger, would diminish his existing parking in any way or not?
I don't want to say it can't, because it hasn't been designed yet. They probably wanted to wait until they would have a design or approval in hand before they go rework that, but it could. That's something, we've already conveyed that to the city engineer. In this case, the engineer that's working on it is S E H, which is also our city engineer, so there's, it's not necessarily a conflict of interest, but we have a line of communication there, so they know what we're looking for in terms of that, but it could be something that, it might have a little bit of a ripple effect with the handicap accessible area that if it needs to trigger a loading accessible spot where they need the kind of the crosshatched area, that could be, it might cause a stall or two there, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question, John, what's the stall with for the parking? Are we going to stick with the 12, or are we going to say cloud 10?
Nine, it says nine.
Nine, okay, close enough. Too narrow.
I'm glad we have a surveyor on the team now. Yeah, I assume it was designed to city standard. It's probably our minimum, but it's the standard.
That's fine.
Would it be possible, on the west side, to maybe have no fence for stalls, say, one through four? And then start with a three-and-a-half-foot fence? And then go to eight? That way, the lights won't be so interactive with the house across on 12th?
It's a possibility. I know that the preference, when we brought it up with PD as well, was to leave it, you know, kind of a, as visible as possible. And I know we're balancing that with residential across, so it's not unreasonable to do kind of a stepped sort of situation. That could be, I know that the biggest concern was boxing it off and creating kind of a-
Yeah, eight-foot would be-
Visibility, a total barrier where someone could really get, you know, there could be a fight or an assault or something, unless someone's there to stop it. It's kind of behind a gate sort of situation. But if that's something you want to consider and discuss, that's certainly okay.
I would also recommend a street light on that island directly south.
I think that's, I think that's part of the consideration. I'll defer to the applicant for that when they have an opportunity to speak. I'm sorry, I should have reflected the street light in the report. I just forgot that aspect.
If it is a public hearing, if someone wants to come up and speak for or against or state an opinion, please come up to the podium, state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Kitty Baugh, I think I sent you an email too. We live on the other end on 11th, and we're really thankful for the more parking, because we've got a single driveway, we've had a lot of problems with it, so that's going to be great. Now our concern is the traffic through the alley. The problem is that some of the motorcycles are so loud that we can't sit and talk in our backyard. I don't, I know you can't control that, but we don't want them all sipping through the alley. I don't know if, I didn't realize there was a fence there, so that at least they have to come around to go into the parking lot, but I don't know if there's anything more you can do about it. That's just our neighborhood concern.
Yep, I did bring it up, because I don't recall if it was either your email or another one that was asking about the traffic flow with the alley, whether that was going to change. There's no proposal to change the current arrangement with the alley. I know that, in speaking with our public works, it's been signed, you know, pretty, as best they can to kind of limit people from going the wrong way, but, you know, there's really only so much that they can do unless you post an officer there to pull over every single person. We understand it, but it's tough to, it's tough to change behavior and it's, you know, it's, same thing on motorcycles, I'm sure that they could be kind of a nuisance.
We're just hoping to get some privacy back. And we're still going to hear them on the streets, so.
I live by pasties, I know how you feel.
Yeah, you cannot talk, right?
Yep.
And it's not all of them, my husband has a bike, he doesn't sound like that. Anyway, that was just my concern, thank you.
I'm Deadmire, I live on 37 12th Avenue North. I think it's a good ideal for Tom, for that parking lot. I talked to him about the privacy fence, where you guys want it? If you can make it about as high as it is on Patty's lot there, that was Patty's? You know which one I'm talking about?
I'm sorry, I don't know the specific names. I can tell you that the, all the fencing in that area is eight-foot high right now.
Yeah, if you could do that.
That's what the fencing for this instance is. The only reason we're not requesting a variance for the fencing, because that's actually over the typical six-foot max, is because it's basically replacing what's already there at eight-foot, so we don't need to do that.
Okay. Over the years, since Tom's got the new bar, on my side of the street where I live, there's an old parking zone there, and they've parked there many, many times. Is there any way you can put up more parking signs in that area? Because they're so far gapped apart, and nobody can see them.
That's, unfortunately, that's not something that, it's in my realm. When we get into the parking, the street parking signage, that's a function of our public works. We could certainly, if it's, if you're just looking at something that's trying to improve what's already there and not necessarily add more, no parking, I can pass that along certainly, and see if it's something they can look at.
Okay, and another thing we have problems with, with people speeding down my street, going 80 in a 30, and we got little kids in our neighborhood.
Yeah, again, I'm sorry, that's-
You noticed that too?
It's ridiculous, it's, you know, it's not his fault. It's just people just have no consideration these days.
Yeah, that's another thing that, it's probably not necessarily pertinent to this particular request, but it's something I can pass along to either our police department, or if you want to, if you prefer to bring it up, that's something that you could also attend a city council meeting. They have a public open forum ahead of every meeting, but I could certainly pass that along. I know that they do sometimes, you know, kind of targeted speed patrols here and there, especially when you get into the warmer months and it's a little bit easier for to do those sorts of things.
Yeah.
And I could certainly pass that along.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hello, I live on 11th Avenue North, I'm 50, I'm the second house from the end on the other one. I walked over here tonight and I counted, there are like 17 cars parked on the west side of 11th, I'm assuming that's the same on the east side of 12th. I'm thinking you're going to actually have more customers. I know in the summer, they would park three blocks down the third, and going even on the cross streets. I don't know if this is going to be enough parking, it'll help, but I'm wondering, just looking at this, I'm wondering, like the garbage truck, where are they going to turn around on the end of that alley on 12th? When they come up that one way, they have to turn around to be able to go back north.
I don't believe that the parking lot addition or the new area would have any impact on-
Well, I'm looking at the curve right there at the end of that parking lot. Where is that, where is that garbage truck going to come and turn around? It's going to have to come on into his driveway, into his parking lot, the existing one, to turn around. I don't know what it does now, does it go into your parking lot now? He's going to have to still do that. Plus, I'm wondering, I see you said room for snow removal. If we have snow like we did this year, where is that snow going to get pushed in that alley? Is it going to go to the opposite side?
It doesn't reflect it on this particular picture, but our city engineer assured me that they have enough, several feet for windrows.
From where that fence is going to be?
Yes.
Okay, well, I hope so, because I know even the way they plow my alley right now, it isn't the best.
Yeah, that was my question too. I mean, obviously, we're in kind of an exceptional snow year, it's not the norm hopefully, but that was my question as well.
Okay, the last one I have is, I know when he takes that house out on 12th, there's a dog in the next house. When the people come out of the ultimate to go in that parking lot, if you have 43 cars in that lot, that dog's going to go crazy. And you're probably going to get a lot of calls for nuisance stuff with that dog. This is just foresight.
Okay.
I mean, I even drove down, when I scot this, I drove on, and that dog was in the yard just barking at my car in the street. Yeah, but I mean, it's going to, now instead of having that buffer, you're going to have just that fence there, but you're going to have people going into that lot at all hours of the night to get to their cars.
Yep, that's good information, I know, we'll pass that along.
Okay, I'm just forewarning you, because I see it's going to be a problem.
Yep.
Unless they do something with the dog.
If you could come back to the mic, please, they try and get everything on tape.
With the dog situation, the dog is cute, you know, I don't mind them, but they got to learn how to keep that dog maintained with this barking.
That, I'm sorry, ma'am, that's not a function of, we're trying to keep the request kind of to issue at hand here with the specific request.
Okay. Tom, you're next.
Hi, I'm Tom Ferrex. First, I'd like to thank-
First, I'd like to thank you guys for consideration of what we're trying to do over there. I'd like to thank you guys because my story's surreal because it took tragedy to create opportunity, and the opportunity obviously worked well. So I know it's been obviously a big change in the neighborhood from what the ultimate used to be compared to what the ultimate is today. So I I I I look at all avenues in regards to making sure people understand, like for this, I think this is a win-win for everyone involved. I think the city wins because we now can get things more confined off the streets. Obviously, we win because we open up a much better opportunity for people to get to us, which a mu- much easier access throughout the calendar year, and I think the neighborhood wins because we're bringing everything more towards Division Street and trying to compact it more than allowing it to, you know, strangle. You know, like when you talk about the dog, I think with all fairness, this wins more for it because instead of people walking by it all night long, we sort of start to bring it up towards Division Street and towards our property, and we enclose it a lot more with the noise fence. You know, Rick, I know you had asked about the lighting. There will be lighting on both the islands, the first one when you come in, the center island, and then the island on the back side as well, and that's basically what we have right now. This parking lot sits pretty well proximity to our other lot as far as square footage, so everything sits. You know, the one variance with the, trying to eliminate the wall on the one side, to me, that becomes critical because that gives law enforcement much better access to have sightlines to our lot all the time, even just driving by Division Street, not necessarily having to be right on that street. And I know in that industry, it it helps the more we can keep things a little more open, where at least they feel a little more. Surveillance is on all all my property, and surveillance will be out there as well, so that helps, but I know the sightlines would be critical from all avenues. You get it more in a three-cylinder box, you create corners that sightlines just don't allow you the opportunity to keep that stuff as clean as you'd like to keep it. So I don't know if there's any questions for me at all, but I just really wanted to make sure that you guys understood. Appreciate the, you know, allowing us to come in front of you here today, and I hope you can join in with us to help this be a win-win for all involved. Thank you.
Anybody else, come back.
I have one more question for you. Oversized trucks coming into that new parking area.
Sir, sir, if you could speak into the mic, please, so we can catch it on video and in tape.
Okay, if you have the oversized trucks, I see these, these, all these stalls are supposed to be eighteen feet or whatever. If you have an oversized truck in there and you have the smaller ones there, that's a potential hazard. Are you going to have it where you say no oversized truck parking in that new lot?
Well, I allow S E H to be the engineer with that, that's why I brought on more.
Okay.
And I'm working with them in regards to dimensions, proximity, length of vehicles. Like, I know our lot now, where the curbing is, when an extended pickup backs up, we need so much square footage from where the curbing is to the back end of the vehicle. So I just really want to work with Dave on right now.
Yeah, when when parking lots are designed, it's it's built typically to a
Accommodate the oversized.
kind of a minimum, minimum standard. There's no requirement that says someone has to, you know, do above and beyond to, you know, accommodate the guy with his street legal monster truck. You know, in this instance, we have, we have a, I know they provided kind of a motorcycle stall because that probably happened to fit well in there, but, you know, there's no requirement to do that. Same same goes for, you know, a stall that's bigger, wider, longer for a jacked-up truck.
I'm not worried about the guy with the bigger truck. It's the ones with the smaller ones who will run into him because his vehicle extends past what their car does. I've seen it happen before.
We do know that we've had another design that we looked at. The problem with that design, we're doing a diagonal, we only gained thirty-six parking stalls compared to forty-five. And to me, if we're going to go through this and really try to make it a win-win for all involved, nine extra stalls are, you know, virtually a three-quarters of a lot of cars, so this is the route why we want this new design.
I see that, but I would like to say, tell your oversized people parking in parking your regular lot and make this for the non-oversized vehicles. Then they're all the same. Then they can, they don't have to worry about that. You're going to get one vehicle in there or something, and somebody with the smaller vehicles is going to hit them. You know, especially if it's a night of drinking or whatever, judgment is impaired. That's an, just an obstacle to forewarn. You know, you can eliminate that really easy.
Tom, what are the size of your parking stalls in the existing parking lot?
Uh, they're the exact same size of what these dimensions are.
Okay.
And they had designed my original lot, and we stayed with the exact same dimensions out of that.
Okay.
And again, this design allowed us to get the forty-five stalls
Right.
based on a diagonal, which would have probably alleviated a little bit with this gentleman's basketball because the diagonal probably created a little more length, but we were only going to get thirty-six parking stalls with that.
Even a crew cab pickup's like twenty-two feet long. Long box crew cab. So it's, would stick out, but like he's concerned about small vehicles, they should be able to see the big vehicle.
Well, especially, you know, a night of drink, I've seen the partying that goes on in there. I've been in your establishment.
I see the cars.
Well, another thing, parking on eleventh, too, I mean, we get people coming out, coming down at all hours of the night. You can hear them, you know, they're jabbering away, walking down the sidewalk to their vehicles. I mean, it's, this will alleviate a lot of that. But like I said, your your business is going to grow, so you might still have the same one because you're going to pick up the additional forty-five cars coming into your business.
Sir, not to interrupt you, but there was another gentleman that wanted to come up and speak.
Hi, Peter Bah. Live on eleventh with this young lady right here. She kept saying, "We, we, we, we." We don't always agree on everything. We pay the bills together, but the scope of this meeting is about the parking lot, and a lot of other things have been brought up. I don't have a problem with the the parking lot moving forward. I wish Tom all the success in the world. Great entrepreneurial ship, good for you. But this is for the record, and the parking lot is a step, but it's not going to solve all the issues that are going on on eleventh and twelfth. It's just not gonna. You'd mentioned that Tom's new parking will be the equivalent of basically one block on both sides of, you know, parking on twelfth and parking on eleventh. On a successful night, which he has many of, parking goes all the way down to third. It's not going to change that. This was an exceptional year with snowfall. You brought up making sure that the west side was open so people could see both ways. Well, drive-through there right now, you can't see both ways because of the snow. You've got metro bus going through there. The metro bus had to pull over in front of our house, which is no problem, I don't care, to let a car go by. I'm going to end it right there because, again, the scope of this meeting is about Tom's, Tom's parking, and I hope that goes forward. But I hope people in the city council hear this. I've talked to his honor, the mayor, several times. He's been very, very helpful. He stood tall and sat down with me a few times and talked about it. He 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 moved some snow the other day, but again, I've had my say.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up and speak?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Seconded.
We got a motion and a second to close public hearing. All in favor, signature saying aye.
Aye.
Click hearing closed at seven oh eight with all present. Okay, discussion?
Ready for a motion?
Good with both feet?
No, I want to just make a motion.
Yep.
Uh, the motion would move to recommend the city council approve the rezoning of twenty-twelfth avenue north and from R one, single-family residential to B two, commercial general business district.
My second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. All in favor, signature saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, pass with all present. For the landscaping setback.
I'd move to recommend to the city council to approve variants from city ordinance fifty-two point two seven, sub seven F, to reduce required landscape setback area between B two, commercial general business district and R one, single-family residential district from fifteen feet to zero feet.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second to approve with listening. All in favor, signature saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, pass with all present. Last one, variants for foregoing Birmingham screening.
I recommend approval of variants request from city ordinance section five-two-point four-two subdivision seven L to reduce the minimum screening Birmingham for parking lot adjacent to or across from residential properties from minimum of three and a half feet height to zero feet height.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve listed, all in favor, signature saying aye.
Mr. Chair, I think you should clarify that that being only the
West side.
area along the west side facing twelfth, just for clarity.
Yes.
That's a good point, thank you. I didn't, I didn't note that in the suggested motion. That'll be reflected in the resolution that goes to council.
Condition put on it, with condition, everybody approve, signature saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, pass with all present.
And for folks in the audience, Mr. Ferrericks, we expect that this will go, just kind of conveniently, we do have a city council meeting this coming Monday, the twentieth. We expect us to be on the agenda for that, kind of a quick turnaround, so you luck out this time.
Yep, thank you. Any new business or?
No, sir, nothing additional for me tonight.
Then here. But make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, signature saying aye.
Aye.
Being adjourned at seven twelve.